Two thousand twenty-three. And just like that, we're already in the third month of the grand new year. And again, a reminder pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one, along with the Governor's State of Declaration issued on March fourth. This meeting may be conducted via teleconference. Which? Looks like we're going to be making a decision today about how we want to handle this, so. With that. There is information online about how to attend on Zoom. And we'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna go ahead and. All the meeting order at five oh four. And I'm gonna ask the city attorney or the clerk if she's on. The clerk and treasurer will also be making their way back to. City Council, because we haven't seen them forever, too. Be nice to see them. They'll be making their way back. And with that, we'll ask our. City Attorney to note. For the record, the attendance, and then I'm gonna ask. Bill Patterson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move forward on approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to add an item, an emergency item under.
We're, I think, we're having a study session at five o'clock.
That's correct, but we'll, we'll go ahead and get there, and then we'll go ahead and add that item.
Correct. The, the, the regularly scheduled for six, the study sessions.
Oh, we don't have closed session.
We don't have closed session.
Okay, so gave you to Tommy, we didn't have.
We have a, so you have a study session scheduled, we already.
Well, Carlos, I think you're right. And with that, we'll get into our study session. And then who's leading the study session? And it's gonna be Mr. Gabriel Perez.
Correct.
And for the public information, two items, sidewalk vendor ordinance, and then the other one is medium land state design guidelines.
And this isn't televised, right? Because I don't think our, our study sessions are televised. Actually, we have no television. We used to have television, like people could see their council members. Tony, to do this. No, no, I know. Go ahead, Gabriel.
And by the way, study sessions are a little bit more free flowing. If you want to get off the dais, go down there, look at the presentation, you're welcome to do so. Right? No decisions. Okay, it's working. All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, Gabriel Bettis, your Development Service Director. This first item is regarding sidewalk vendor ordinance. And in compliance with Senate Bill nine forty-six. A little bit of background to this, in two thousand eighteen, the California Legislature passed SB nine forty-six, which prohibits cities from regulating sidewalk vendors. Except under certain provisions of the law. The law allows the city to implement sidewalk vending with respect to time, place, and many manner regulations. As long as it's directly related to objective health, safety, and welfare concerns that don't restrict the sidewalk vendor from being able to operate. So the definition sidewalk vendor means the person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart stand, display, pedal driven cart, wagon, showcase, rack, non-motorized conveyance. From one person upon a public sidewalk or other pedestrian path. So. Maybe just rewinding a little bit to set the table on this is that, you know, typically, if someone the vendor selling merchandise. Or selling food, this typically takes place inside four walls, right, in a building, restaurant, or retail store. This is different, right? This is in the public right of way. The city has ordinances prohibiting that currently right now. So the state law allows that opportunity for sidewalk vendors to exist. In the city and preempts us from doing certain things. So you either have the sidewalk vendor, which would be stationary, or you have a roaming sidewalk vendor, which means that that vendor can move place to place. But they only stop to do the transaction. So here's a photograph. This is not the most relevant, but it's, you know, one of the things that we saw, a food vendor, right? In this case, a little bit different, because it looks like it's mostly off the sidewalk on private property. And we can go into that a little bit, because kind of some of the pop-ups that you see, that's not the sidewalk vendor issue, right? That's actually on private property. But the council could provide some direction and weigh in on that issue and how we allow that. So what can we not regulate according to the state law? Well, we can't prohibit all sidewalk vending. We can't impose requirements due to economic competition concerns. So let's say there's a clothing store. That's in an existing retail center, and then there's a sidewalk vendor that's trying to sell merchandise on the sidewalk. But we can't say you can't locate on the sidewalk, because you're too close to this other vendor that sells clothes, right? The last is requiring a sidewalk vendor to obtain approval from a non-governmental entity. So the approval wouldn't become from the city.
What we can't.
What do you mean by that?
Like, if we delegated that off to like a nonprofit or a private entity to issue permits or regulate it.
Permits.
Yeah. So what can we regulate according to the Senate bill? We can regulate hours of operation. We can regulate reasonable sanitation requirements. Compliance with ADA. So for example, you're on a sidewalk, well, there's only a certain amount of room left to be able to pass through if you're pedestrian. Or if you're on a wheelchair. Requiring a sidewalk vending permit and a, and a business license, so we can acquire permit for someone to do the vending. And also require business license. Requiring a California Department of Tax and Fee Administration seller's permit. Requiring additional licenses from state and local agencies, such as county, county health permits. We typically require county, county health permits for, for restaurants. So then, you know, do we want to do the same thing with vendors that sell food on the sidewalk? Requiring submission of information on vendors' proposed operations, so we can require, well, where are you planning to locate? And how large is your, you know, push cart, right? So there was a draft ordinance that was developed with the Development Service Department and the Attorney's Office. And it looked to amend three titles of the municipal code, the Business Licenses and Regulations. Title, the Health and Safety Title, and Street Sidewalks in Public Places, entitled twelve. And so that ordinance would have done this. It would have limited the, the number of vendors to about fifty. So it assumed based on. So that assumes thirty-two sidewalk vendors, right, stationary and eighteen roaming vendors. And so the assumption for the thirty-two vendors was that there would be one vendor every five hundred linear feet of sidewalk in the city's commercial corridors, right? For example, like Caesar Chavez Street, that's a commercial corridor. And so, under that calculation, it would amount to about thirty-two vendors. As far as roaming vendors, it would be one roaming vendor to potentially service two residential neighborhoods on a given day. So out of thirty-six residential neighborhoods that were identified in the city, the public streets, that would be eighteen vendors. So thirty-two vendors for the sidewalk, stationary vendors, roaming vendors, adding another eighteen would get you that fifty vendor cap. In terms of the ordinance, it would also require a permit from the city. So you would have to get a business license and a sidewalk vending permit. You would have to get a California seller's permit with a sales tax number issued by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. We'd have to either provide a driver's license, a tax ID number, or a municipal ID number. And I, I was talking to the City Attorney's Office. I don't think that exists right now, municipal ID number that the city issues. But my assumption, that is in there in case, let's say you, maybe you were undocumented and wanted to allow anyone to be able to pull a sidewalk vending permit. Then it's, you know, it's gonna be hard to obtain other proof of identification. So I believe that's why the municipal ID number.
Gabriel, I'm assuming that because we have no ordinance at this point, then none of this is, like, what's the status quo right now?
The status quo is, we've been hands off on, on sidewalk vendors at this point. And so, but we can enforce something. If someone's blocking ADA path of travel, we can enforce something like that, the city. But it's better for us to have something on the books to be able to go by. So the other thing is a county health department permit, right? So if they're selling food, we can require health permit. The other is a site plan showing where they plan to locate, and that they have a clearance, the thirty-six inches of clearance. A general liability policy of a million dollars. And then the other requirement for that permit, the ordinance with the life scan, life scan, background check, filed with the Chief of Police, Police Department will review that. Now, this last one is probably the one that I kind of thought doesn't really make sense in the city. To, we don't do that life scan for other commercial businesses in the city. And so I don't know why we would apply that standard for this permit, but just some observations.
What was, what was your last point?
Um, is that, like, for example, like a restaurant, or just like a typical retailer, we don't require them to go through a life scan background check through the police department. Good. So I don't know why we would do that in this case. As far as permitted locations, so that means sidewalk vendor could be in non-residential zones and mixed use zones. They would have to leave thirty-six inches of, of a path to travel that's accessible for the public. And that's usually enough area for someone that's handicapped to be able to pass through, or also pedestrian, right? Private building entrances and private driveways may not be blocked. So other cities will have, actually have a certain distance you need to be from a building entrance. The ordinance that was prepared by the city was that you just don't block an entrance, right? So you can be close to an entrance, but you can't block it. The other is not permitted within ten feet of the fire hydrant, fire escape, bus stop, the lean zone, handicap parking space. You know, for safety reasons, for, for the public, thirty feet from a street and highway intersection. So just kind of keep this in mind. If you've seen street vendors out there, a lot of times you'll see them at an intersection, right? Makes sense, right? Because that's where the heaviest traffic is. That with the draft ordinance, you wouldn't be able to locate within thirty feet of a highway or street intersection. Can't be within the vicinity of farmer's market, swap meat, or temporary event permit. So if you had a special event, you can't be within the vicinity. For example, we did something, say, we did something in Veterans Park. And so, you, you also need to be within five hundred feet of public. Or public street parking, or five hundred feet of private parking for that vending area. So when this ordinance was drafted. It assumed that someone should be able to park somewhere, either publicly or on private property, to be able to access the, the street vendor. And perhaps that's for safety purposes, also to avoid kind of. Car stacking off of the street, right, to try to. Solicit the, the vendor. So this is our sidewalk standard specifications, and I use this as, as an example to see, like, well, how do we apply this at the city, right? If you could see the table, it shows how wide our sidewalks can be with different streets. So it's either between five feet and six feet. So on a commercial corridor, where you have a six-foot sidewalk, well, if you have to keep three feet clear. You only have about three feet for the vendor to be able to locate something. That's barely enough to fit like a, a table, right? So the vendor doesn't fit in there. So it's. A little difficult to do that, right? So, you know, really, where this works out better is on Sixth Street, where you have wider sidewalks, right? And so. So that's where it's gonna be easier to do it. Everywhere else in the city, it's either five or six foot sidewalk. So it's gonna be very difficult to have that thirty-six foot clearance, five inch clearance. So I think it's gonna be important to kind of get your feedback on there. Other cities require more of a clearance, so like forty inches, right? Essentially, that makes it almost illegal for you to do sidewalk vending in those cities. So here's an example of Sixth Street, right? So obviously, you can see the sidewalks are bigger than six feet, so. But essentially, that makes it the easiest place to actually do sidewalk vending. But, you know, is, is this where we want to see sidewalk vending concentrated in the city? And it also allows. City. Parks to be used for sidewalk vending. And so it would be prohibited in city parks under the ordinance where we have a concession agreement with. A separate party, who's exclusive contract, and that's at Bagduma Park and Restless Forest Park. So there wouldn't be sidewalk vending allowed there. But the other parks where it could exist, and I excluded Veterans Park, but it would include Veterans Park, the Avenue fifty-three top lots, here of Vista Park, Faitland, and Doral Park. Other requirements is that it sets hours of operation, so limits it between six AM and one thirty AM every day. Vendors are to maintain their area clean and the sanitary condition. No tables or chairs or fences. So some of the pop-ups you see on private property. A lot of times you'll see like tables and chairs for, for the public to be able to sit. In this case, you wouldn't be able to do that. Exterior storage is prohibited, obviously, to minimize the view from the street. Of just exterior storage, and then no discharge of liquid into the city streets or storm drains. As far as roaming sidewalk vendors, there's some different requirements. So the hours of operation would be seven AM to six PM. So the stationary vendors is one thirty AM. In residential areas, it'd be six PM. That may be for obvious reasons, residential area, probably doesn't make sense to have vendors operating all the way into the late hours of the night. And then the sidewalk vendor. Is, you know, under this condition, it cannot conduct sales from public street. So they would have to conduct the, the sale. You know, with the residents on their, on their property. So there's penalties that the city can administer with respect to. Violating. The ordinance, and so it establishes what the minimum cost could be for first violation, second, and third violation. But it has to follow the state law. So we would have to codify what the state requirement is. So there's a couple alternatives here. We could proceed with the draft ordinance as was drafted in two thousand twenty. We could revise the draft ordinance based on feedback from the City Council today. Or we could do nothing, which is what the status quo is right now, where we're pretty much hands off on, on, on sidewalk vendors. And so this purpose of the session is to have the dialogue and kind of see where City Council would like to go with this ordinance. That's the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions. We do have Renee Rosales from Code Enforcement here, and we have representatives from Finance, too. Because there's an administration part of this, right, where we have to administer permits, collect a fee. And so if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I did get a message from Councilmember Donegal. It looks like she's having car problems. We'll be a little late. To the meeting. And just, just a little background, this ordinance came about from, you know, street vendors, food vendors in the LA area. There was a lot of prosecutions going on there, criminalization, you have issues of being undocumented. So because of that. Senator Lott, at that point in time, proposed this legislation with two sort of goals, one to criminalize. Street vending, that's a come. When you look at the fines, what are the max fines? So normally, if somebody's violating your code, right, you do have other code enforcement remedies. However, in this situation, the street vendors, to the extent. They're, they're complying with the state law, those would be the maximum fines, no criminal, no other type of. And that's, that's, that's a policy decision that was made by the legislation. And the other was not to target, target. Food vendors, street vendors economically as well. So that's a reason some of the areas are preempted by state law. The others, we do have to use objective standards or standards that address public health, safety. So that's some of the background as to. State law and how.
How big is the issue, Coachella?
Yeah, quite a bit. So if.
I, I think, is it an issue? I know we have some vendors, but is it an issue that, that, that's?
So remember to distinguish between the sidewalk vendor and then what you're seeing also, which is pop-ups on private property. So those two different issues. So this ordinance would not regulate the pop-ups that you see on private property.
Good.
So in terms of sidewalk vendors. You know, I'll give you some examples. I think some of them even pop up, like when the city offices are closed, right? So you see them pop up on a, on a Friday. So it's a food vendor, I've seen issue where, you know, it's on fifty-two. It's blocking the sidewalk, so someone that's handicapped cannot pass through, right? So there is that issue, right? And more, maybe more, it's an issue designated places where it's not gonna create that issue, right? There are areas that I think that could happen. And then you see it mostly happening at intersections, right, street intersections. Now, it also occurs on undeveloped property, and I think that's more of a concern, because you have people that. Can't safely access the vendor area. There's not appropriate parking. So somewhere I've seen this is. Near the corner of Avenue fifty and Van Buren Street. So you have that vacant property at the, the southwest corner. And so, you know, doesn't make sense to have street vendors focused on areas that are actually developed, right?
And then, and you're, and you're, in your current draft ordinance, you don't have a restriction on locations for roads that have a certain miles per hour. You know, I think that would be.
You don't.
Something to look at, because if, you know, where it's like fifty miles per hour, and there's the guy walking, it comes up to your, he's. The guy that sells flowers, just one specific vendor, he's literally walking and roaming in the middle of the street and the road, like Avenue fifty-two is where he roams. And he just comes up to you, and, and it's, it's a pedestrian hazard, but it's also vehicular hazard. So I think it's looking at where that miles per hour, because if they're vending in a high miles per hour, you know, over fifty, you know. Depending on the area, you can cause some vehicular. People opening their door, they're gonna pull over at the side, or.
So I, I'm wondering if. What we have by default of state law. In terms of the safety concern, is sufficient enough to enforce the safety concern? So in other words, Frank just brought up a great point.
Right.
That you have vendors who are going into the actual street. Selling on the street. And it happens right here off of Avenue fifty and De Oro, too. Where, you know, the guy puts his globes up and flowers, and he gets right into the crosswalk. And. Is it not enough to enforce what's already on the books?
To be, I can give you the crosswalk, there might be. We have your other tools. I mean, this dealing with the public right of way, specifically sidewalks. So if you're going beyond that on private property or onto the public street, you might, I think you may have other. Rights in your code, but you have to work.
Or if you enforce it, it could probably be challenged, right? So if you enforce it and you say, you know, I can't do my sidewalk vending because of the city's ordinance. You know, and it could potentially be a challenge to our existing requirements.
On, on my end, I, I think, you know, being loud, and, and so for me, it's. If, if the staff is saying that we have safety concerns, then, then we need to address them. But I think the last thing I want. Is for us to create. Policies that further criminalize people that are trying to make a living, or, or, or then, instead of, but we, we also want to make sure that, and on my point is. Having an educational time period, a grace period, that we educate people, the vendors, we work with the vendors, and we tell them about, you know, these policies. Versus what we see on social media with some cities where their, their team comes in and the meat is good, and you see, you know, nice trompo with. With carne, and, and, and the cities come in and humanely just throw all that food away. And we're living in a time where, you know, people are hungry. And, and just seem like, I would hate to see City Coachella, you know, badge. You know, team going there and just throw food away. From hardworking people, you know, I, I, you know, that, that, that to me, I, I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't want to go there. You know, I see here that instead of, I don't see that, I see fines as, 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 as the, as a recommended, the recommended, uh. Sort of a discipline, if you will. But I, I, I don't know, I, I, I want to understand how big the concern is. I want to know how many vendors we have. How many people actually report and are complaining about them, or is this something that we're just speculating, you know, before I feel comfortable? You know, adding more to what the state already requires, because I, I'm comfortable with what this, today, I'm like, why are we, you know. I, I, maybe my council colleagues are getting complaints, maybe you're getting complaints, I haven't heard anything, but, um. I, 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 today, I'm comfortable with seeing how, how it is, but.
And, and let's just talk about one of the things that the council member mentioned. This is not to criminalize people. In fact, the.
I want to make sure we, we don't.
The law says you can't criminalize them. And that's just, that's on what the state law is, so no city can criminalize them. So, so language is important that we put out there, that this is not a criminalizing effort. In terms of the complaints we've got, and typically, they come from other businesses, but per the law, we're not allowed to worry about competition. And so what they have brought up, these other businesses or people that call in, is basically the in-your-face kind of action. You know, on the, on the street. And those are the, those are the concerns I've heard, not only from businesses, but I've also heard it from. Just regular, you know, community members that, that you got people that are on the street, and they're selling produce, you know, bears, flowers, lobos. And they're on the street. And so I'm wondering, again, I asked, is, if the ordinance, the state policy is, is such. Is it not enough, you know, in order to enforce it when people are on the street?
I would, I would just say it's probably, so I think the council can be as flexible. As you want with this ordinance, right? You, you might have saw all those requirements there, you can dial them back, right? But I think it's important for us to have a set of rules that we can share with the sidewalk vending community. Say like, here, here's the rules to, to comply with in the city, because they're not gonna know, like, hey, there's this ADA requirement you have in the code. How are they gonna know that? But if we probably, if we're able to do it, maybe like the education component that council member Galarza was talking about. Well, you know, we can share that, and be like, hey, you know, just make sure you're clear thirty-six, six inches. You know, the permit process could be very simplified, if, if we need to be. You know, there's a lot of things in that list, right? One of the things that I don't agree with is doing the life scan with the Chief of Police. But, you know, you can decide if you want to require liability insurance or documents from the state. You don't need to require all of that. It's up to you, right? The state gives you that power to do that.
Going back to the life scan, so we are not required to follow that, like, we don't have to, okay?
Those are just mostly everything that I listed out.
Yeah.
Were requirements that were added to the ordinance.
Okay, because, I mean. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Galarza. For the life scan, the background check, I don't see how that makes any sense. I don't think we want to put, you know, more. We just don't want to put more on people's, you know, saying, okay, this is another hurdle that you have to go through. And maybe there are some folks that are not able to get, you know, a, a job at that moment because of a background check, and now we're adding more hurdles to them. So I think just being as flexible as we can, and then, I mean, this ordinance, it's something that we can always go back to, right?
Correct. Right. Yeah, so it's, if you're too strict, you might have people that don't, so they do it anyway, and, but they don't do it according to.
Right.
Okay, let's go back to what can and cannot be in the provision or the ordinance if we adopt something. Can you put that up on the screen?
Yeah. That's how that says what you can do. So it's probably like the third slide or fourth slide. Sort of, oh, yeah, I'll do it. Sorry about that. But we can regulate.
All right. So I think the number one concern is, is safety. I mean, everybody wants these vendors to be safe. And then it's also, everybody wants people with. Disabilities to also have access. So I think that's, those two things are important, right? Like, we want to see that the vendors are safe, so we don't want them being on the roads, we don't want them being, you know, in your face. And then, but we also don't want them blocking the, the. Handicap access. And so we want them put back. We don't want to see people with. Doing a background check. And to your point, businesses are not required to do a background check. Why would we make vendors do a background check? That's more of like a. An attempt to try to limit. Like hardcore right wing, you know. Yeah, I get it. We don't. We don't need a seller's permit. I mean, do we have to take them to the state? We don't need to tell them to stay. They, I think maybe we just have them come in here and say, hey, we'll pull a small permit. It should be an annual fee, shouldn't it? What's a yearly fee just to 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 sell in the city? As a for the whole year? So one sixty-four. Now, does that is that for one box? Or is it for like, say, I have five carretas? So if I, so it's one hundred and sixty-four for just a business? Right, but they're not going to do a good job of having grocery seats because it's a cash business, and who would provide grocery seats? It's just, we're talking about fourteen dollars a month to be able to sell on the corner. Less than, right? I mean, that's a one sixty-four divided by twelve is thirteen sixteen, something. All right. Do we want to charge people a permit?
The business license?
I think it depends on the price, but I think they should still have something just to keep track of who's vending. It's more of a like a like a tracking mechanism of who's who's in and out of the city and who do you have? So that way you know, you know, at least there's a record for like who enforcement to know, like.
We care about reasonable sanitary operations. Don't gotta use a restroom.
A lot of the ones I've seen, people are just coming grab the food and leave. So there's no like, there is some that stay, but the ones I've seen, people mostly just grab and go.
So are, so the sanitation requirements I listed under the draft ordinance were two things, right? That you don't dump any kind of liquids into the street or to retention basins. The other one is you get a health permit from the county for sure. So those are the two.
Well, then that would go to this concern with the trompo. If you, if you're going to require them to go and get a a permit from the county, then the county is going to want to know where are you getting your trompo from? And then more than likely, they're going to require them to put, to go into a commissary, which there's one in India. But the ones at the trompo are coming from LA and they bring them in plastic bags in the back of like the U-Haul. They just bring them out and like, put them on the, on the I know because I saw them, they're direct. And actually, there's none in the city yet. They're all hanging out on their edges. So they're hanging out in the county and corporate area and cover track on fifty and Jackson. And the other ones on fifty-two.
I was in Intana and then I went to a street vendor that had a trompo, but it was pool point. I've been, I've been wanting to see one here, I've been driving around to see if they bring the pool point. The pool point, trompo, these people, it was, it was nice, salsa, like it was tacos.
So the question is, do we want, if we allow it, do we, are we asking that they go and go get a Riverside County health permit?
Wait, is it the food handlers permit or what 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 permit is this?
What it was to serve program.
It would be through environmental health.
Yeah, whatever the the health permit, the issue. And that's up to you. There, under the state law, it doesn't require health permit, so.
Oh, so so we just do the food handlers permit and not not those.
I think Caesar.
How much is?
Say forty bucks a person.
But forty bucks for what it is, is it for the year?
I forget. It's like, it's like, for instance, if you go to a restaurant today, every single person there has to have a fat food handler.
I think it's like for two years.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's two years, two or three years, right? Because I remember when I worked in food service, I would get it.
We do all the events. It's a two years for forty bucks?
Yeah, it's like forty bucks a person. So like every employee you get, I mean, yeah, it's like two, because I worked that at the Taco in twenty-twelve, and then the next year I worked at CityWalk. And I'd have to go back and do it. So, but yeah, any any employee, you go to a restaurant, uh, they have to have it. It's not an, it's not the business owner, it's it's the employee that's, you know, because they need to learn about contamination.
So I just, I just if you add the forty dollars divided by twenty-four, that's what, like one sixty or something like that? And then plus the thirteen sixty, so now fifteen twenty-six to be able to be a street vendor with our permit and that account. What else do we want to do?
You know, the other thing maybe to weigh in on is right now, the way that the ordinance reads is that you have to be thirty feet from an intersection. Now, there's a reason for that, right? Because you have people that are crossing streets. And so, right, so you want to avoid an issue where you're blocking visibility for traffic, right? But it's thirty feet too restrictive. I don't know how we arrived at thirty feet, but that's what's in the ordinance.
I don't think we should require them to do a submission of the of their vendor's proposed operations. We don't want to see additional licenses from the state or local agency. We just want to see a food handlers permit is what I heard. Uh, we don't want to require the Department of Tax Fee Administration seller's permit. We do want to have the vendor have a permit from the city. We do want them to comply with the the business, the, I'm sorry, the ADA. Anything else?
What about the general liability? General liability policy, can you go for that? Like, what? Is that something that we have to require too?
Yeah, so they would like for
Discretionary.
Yeah. So like a restaurant or like a retail, like business that sells merchandise, we don't require a liability policy when they get a business license. That's, that's up to them to do it. This was in our ordinance. Maybe because public right of way, but you know, again, that's optional, up to the council.
A part of that. A general liability insurance of a million dollars is going to be I don't know, do we know what that costs anybody? What about for?
Wow.
What, so then? That's a lot. We're not going to require that. Because then if you do, I mean, how many weekends do you have? Fifty-two? All right, so one hundred and fifty times fifty-two is what?
It's a lot, it's a lot, it's the
Fifty-two, that's seven thousand eight hundred dollars, just to say, that's for the day. And if they want to do I don't know, if they want to do, they want to do the weekend, that's going to be pretty, that's pretty pricey. You know what I mean? Like, so now when I require that. So whoever gets sick, you just got to see them personally. I mean, that's what it's going to come down to.
We're not, we're not hoping for that, right?
You know, it's 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 also consumer choice. Now, people have that option, like, they, they, you know. I I saw, I saw some of the county ads where like, where do these people wash their hands? That's, that's, that was very insensitive. That they did that, but it's like, you know, like, that's, if I think about it, like, if I want to go eat by there, then it's my option, you know, it's a I thought they were capitalists, all of a sudden they're, you know, not not so capitalist and afraid of competition.
Well, we, we took that requirement out.
Yes. Good, good. I'm just, I'm saying, I don't want to be insensitive. Let's look at what some bad practices that have happened in our communities and not repeat those.
We're, we are being sensitive, we're not being insensitive, we just took that out.
Good, good, good.
And so right now, all I heard is is we want to see an ordinance that prioritizes safety, that prioritizes ADA, that asks for a a city permit and that asks for a food handler certificate. And if we, and if we do that, right, it would, it would, it would basically be a cost of fifteen dollars and thirty cents in order to do setup in the city. Outside of that, we're not asking for anything.
Yeah, can 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 can, you know, before this comes to us, I can, can staff, I, you know, I tried to Google search, I couldn't find real fast, but if for the food handlers permit, food handler's card, you know, do, you know, do the, what do they require, like, an ID, do they need to be? Can a document to people go into the county and get a food handler from, you know, like, I want to make sure, you know, like you up, you know, that those, those are some questions that we want to know before before we, you know.
They, they can.
Right, I, well, I want to make, all right, I believe you, but I want to make sure that staff could get that too, information.
We could, we double check on that.
Yeah.
And bring that back.
And and then, for the conversation, when we do this education piece, maybe we need to do a town hall with street vendors. I mean, the thirty feet, I don't know, it it can it be less, you know, it, what what's thirty feet seems, sounds like, you know, a lot of the popular spots are are within thirty feet of of an intersection. Have have, you know, they've been around, what accidents have we seen? Or have, you know, I know we need to be processing in the case of being an accident, but have there been accidents or 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 where you know, or just being too cautious about, you know, I I I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't, because nothing's happened, maybe we need to prevent it from happening. But, um, you know, but I I'm not saying on thirty, you know, if it could be less, you know, those conversations that I I'm still open to having, obviously, right now, just out of thought, but I'd like to see what are, what a community want to see, what what are the street vendors, what are their opinions? Um, before, you know.
Well, the street vendor is not going to want to change, so they're going to want to be right on the corner. And they're going to be right in the right of way. I mean, they're going to want to be right on the street. And so so, so we can't have it both ways. If we want safety, then we're going to have to enforce some type of
Yeah.
You know, uh, thirty feet.
Does it have to be thirty? Can it be fifteen? You know?
So we could
Thirty feet's a lot.
We we can look at it that and see what other cities do with respect to if they allowed an intersection, but maybe they're like fifteen, maybe they're ten feet.
Yeah, your, your Super Bowl, ten feet is a lot, man. You know, it makes a big difference. Thirty feet, that that
the third of, let's just say hypothetically, someone's coming down and they're drinking on fifty-two. And the street vendor is there and and they're five feet from the right of way. And oops.
Well, the problem there is a drunk driver, not the food vendor.
Well, let's just say someone has a blow up.
Right, right. I mean, the problem is there, someone didn't check their tires, not the street vendor. It it will make sure that that we create, you know, it's, it's, I I think, I think, you know, obviously, the safety is a concern regardless of who's who who who's who's at fault. I just, you know, yeah, let's look into what other cities are doing. I again, if we, if thirty is, is what we agree on, is what we're agreeing, I just want to put it out there that I'm not closed off to seeing other options.
Okay, do, and we're about fifty minutes to the regular me at six, and we have one more item. Uh, does the council want to see this come back in another study session, or are you ready for us to draft an ordinance and bring that back in the future?
Definitely. And we can have the debates.
Okay.
On the dais.
Me, any other feedback?
No, what's the other item?
Landscape street medians. We'll go through this pretty quick.
It's a far more interesting.
Okay. So the reason, uh, council is before you is that we have new landscape median guidelines, or, I mean, landscape medians that are going in. Uh, but we want to get some feedback because I think it's a good opportunity to be able to do that with some of the new development. So the city did adopt landscape median design guidelines back in two thousand and eight. Those guidelines established classifications for certain landscape median designs based on the streets, uh, street type, called out hardscape design, landscape, uh, types, uh, mounding in the landscape medians and even themed light poles. So this is kind of what's in the plan, so it has a classification of all the streets and certain streets have a certain median that's supposed to look a certain way. How you're supposed to do the mounding, what type of trees go in. How it's supposed to look at street level, the type of lights go in, in all the landscape materials. Just some photos of some of the existing landscape medians. These are landscape medians that the city installed years ago. And on Caesar Chavez Street, so you could kind of see different patterns, right? You could see the red stamped concrete at the nose of medians. And a lot of it's desert landscaping uh, in the planted areas, uh, on the street, you can also see the trees are are date palms. And they have lights, they're uplit. Um, there are other areas where it's a little bit more bare, uh, more for cost savings and maintenance. Uh, so here's some more photos, a lot of it kind of has that date palm and decomposed granite and stone pattern. Uh, one of our more recent landscape medians was on Grapefruit Boulevard related to the urban green program. This actually incorporated drainage wells, so to be able to collect water. Uh, most of our medians don't do that. So, uh, looks like we did this for the grant. Uh, but it would be good to get feedback if you want to see more types of medians like this where it serves a purpose for capturing water. Uh, the other is Lan Avenue fifty landscape median. Uh, so this is an Arturo Road. The trees are actually gone right now because they're getting replaced when I talked to Maritza with some date palms. And, uh, so we had Mariposa Point of New Development by D R Horton come in. And they have to construct the median. And so we're like, well, what do we require? This is what our landscape median design guidelines, um, mentioned. Uh, but looking at this, we're like, well, you know, is there room to be able to up update these median guidelines? You know, does the council want to see something else in the medians that is not already planned for in the the guidelines? This is the cross section of what's called out for the landscape medians. We don't do any themed light poles, as mentioned in here. Uh, but we have been putting in some canopy trees with the new median. So this is the new median that's, um, been installed. And you could see it's date palms and the combination of canopy trees. Uh, it does have some of that hardscape in between the curbs. But it actually stops at a certain point according to these guidelines, right? So some cities, uh, you actually might see the 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 red pattern along the sides of the the full length of the curb. So, um, so we want to get some feedback there. The other thing I want to get feedback is on Van Buren Street. We have two projects coming in. On the left, you could see the the larger landscape enhanced areas that we're going to start getting for two residential developments. And I want to get some feedback. If you want to see the the railing that comes from Vista Santa Rosa guidelines, you've seen City of India do this. See, uh, the City of La Quinta that does this in some of the more peripheral areas of their city. Uh, but right now is the opportunity to kind of plan that out, and I just want to get some feedback. What it looks like is in the picture on the right. Uh, and this is, these are standards that, uh, La Quinta actually developed to incorporate that that rail. On the left, if we didn't do that, it would look something like like this, that you see outside of the Sevilla project by Pulte Homes. Uh, but I think there's opportunity to either go with what we see on the left or try something new and do something on the on the right.
So so Gabe, I I don't think each each corridor should be the same, but I do think that once the corridor has a a design that it should be consistent. So let's, let's talk about Avenue fifty, for example. It, it feels like, and and thank you, Maritza, I brought it up the last meeting about how now with these new medium improvements that we're going to need to really think about how that whole corridor really feels because you have you have aging trees, like on, not so much on the on the mediums, but on the sides of the L M Ds. And then we have somewhat of a new plant palette that we planted on the mediums. And I say that because if you look at if you look at, you know, from Van Buren, you know, headed towards Frederick, like, that's completely different than than, uh, than what we have between, you know, Van Buren headed towards Calhoun. So so I I think my biggest thing is is consistency on the corridor. And and if we're going to start and and I do like the fact that, like, you know, we're 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 using the palm trees down fifty and obviously we've used them down Cesar Chavez. But 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 I also like the fact that down Grapefruit, we we didn't go with palm trees, we went with something better or something different with the tree canopy. So that's my point is that we're going to, if we're going to move a, 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 a a a medium design, then we need to stay consistent throughout the the median on the corridor and not have a hodgepodge of but I think fifty-two could potentially look like, but the good thing is or fifty could potentially look like, but the good thing is that that the plant life is it's done and we have to redo it anyway. So so there's going to be an opportunity for some consistency.
Just to add to that, so if you look at this slide, so what was adopted on Avenue fifty doesn't follow this landscape median plan. You could see there's canopy trees that are only proposed, right? So no date palms. So we did depart from the landscape median guidelines. Uh, so is council interested in up upgrading these design guidelines? Or do you like, would you like us to address on a case by case basis? And then just make sure that it's consistent across the board? Or do you like, would you like us to address on a case-by-case basis, and then just make sure that it's consistent across the board?
Well, it, the, at least for me, it, it depends on what's in the guidelines, so, so, so for example, I know in the new. Uh, design, you've, you, you implemented, uh, lighting on, in the mediums. And, and so now there's gonna be, those mediums are gonna be lit, whereas down the road, there wasn't any lighting. And so, I think we need to standardize that, I also think we need to standardize, you know, three-quarter inch rock and, and knock DG out of that sucker. I think we need to really think about, um, our plant selection, when we, when it comes to what plants look like in the fall. Versus what, what the mediums look like in the summer, so when people do plant, like, we should have flowers, and not just. Boring green, you know what I mean, uh, uh, year-round. So, so for me, that's important, now, the, now the other side, and, and I do like the idea that you're talking about, where. You can't put a, a, a bear, or a, a little curb that extends, uh, you know, you know, six inches off, off the. Like a little piece of cement, you know what I mean, that extends off the curb, and I, I think that's a, that's a, that's a cool little idea. And the other thing, you know, I've seen in other communities where, where they'll come in with like, a big rock that's clear. Or a green, or red, or whatever, but it's a, it's, it's actually a smaller boulder, and they're getting into like different types of use. Know what I mean, and, and I, I think that's, that's, that's something to consider on, on, on our corridors, on fifty-two. Uh, particularly as we go from Van Buren, Calhoun, Jackson. I think it would be smart of us to really think about. You know, how we can integrate and blend into the Vista Santa Rosa community, because we wanna be there, we, we want, we wanna make the case that we, that we can do it right too. You know, and, and they can be of somewhat rural, attractive area, so I, I am. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with like, looking at the standards, and then, because we're gonna have bigger setbacks. And then really thinking about what ultimately that area looks like, I, I think, I think it'd be, it'll, it'll, it'll look great, it'll complement what we're trying to do as a community, and, and then get a good feel. What, on each corridor, you know, what they could potentially look like, and the idea of biosoils, if that's a compliment to, to the drainage, why not? Sorry, I spoke a lot.
I mean, you didn't hit it on the nail.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thanks, okay.
The only thing I would add, no, Gabriel, is don't be afraid to add public art. One of, one of the things that we're not doing, and, and, and here's, here's an example of public art that's being added to the medians. If you go down up the sale on Palm Desert, they have public art. And so we, we should really think about how we can add public art, you know?
What's that?
You're saying you're scared?
No, he's, Gabe was asking us for a direction, so Avenue fifty-four, for example.
Yeah.
Uh, in front of the tribe.
Right.
You know, we, and, and, and Andrew, for example, out on Avenue fifty-three, we just, we just did a medium that's all, that's all boulder. So it's a red boulder, it's cool, but could we add some type of public art in there?
Yeah.
You know?
Good suggestions.
And then my, my crazy thinking is, could we get more European, and then really rethink our streets? And, and look at the mediums as an actual way where they could actually become the bike lanes. Or they could become, you know, walking corridors, or they could become, you know, areas in which people could recreate. They do that in, in, in Mexico, they do that all over, and so. I'm not sure if we're thinking like that, and I'm not sure if we can do that in the existing corridors, but we certainly have an opportunity on the other side. You know what I mean, and really thinking how those, how those corridors function and make a sense of place.
Yeah, yeah, there's one specific plan that's in the process right now, so, it's good feedback that we can.
Yeah, cause if we're maintaining those things, and, and people are maintaining them, I mean, might, might as well put some functionality other than just looking at them, and, you know? Just throwing those ideas out there.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback, uh, any, any other comments? I think we're close to the end of this day session, we have two minutes.
We'll put a boxing ring right in the corridor, have a boxing in the street.
Or we could put a boxing statue, right, like, on Avenue fifty-two, and then we, we need to get some little art, something like that, and then. And put the nameplates of our champions.
But, and, and to open it is a boxing match on the street. And it, in, in New York, they block the streets, and they do the wrestling right in the middle, in, in Times Square, it's pretty dope.
Council, good feedback.